Okay, we'll call the regular school board meeting August 15th to order. Roll call, let the record reflect all board members are present. I'd like to welcome all our guests this evening. Nice to see you here. Correspondence and recognition, we have 1.3 public participation, we have a request by Blake Ranier to address the board.
Good evening, members of ISD 518 Board, colleagues, members of the community. My name is Blake Ranier, and I have been a resident of Worthington for five years, and an English teacher for grades nine through 12 in District 518's Credit Acceleration Program at the Learning Center. This is my second year in that role. Before this, I served as an interventionist at the Worthington Middle School for four years. The 2023-2024 school year will mark my 12th year as a teacher in the state of Minnesota. In addition to my job as a teacher for the district, I have also served as a co-adviser for the Middle School Student Council, and I judge for Worthington's middle and high school speech team at Invitational Meetings throughout southwest Minnesota. This evening, I would like to speak to you about some very good things happening at District 518. In two months' time, my fiance and I, Eric Parrish, will be getting married. Eric has served as the director of the High School's Spring Musical for multiple years, and more recently has taken on the High School's Fall Play. The completion of his masters this year, along with planning a wedding, required him to step away from his directing role at the high school this year. However, in his resignation, he expressed to Mr. Dale that he would be open to returning if a long-term solution was not found. Instead of the usual route of registering for gifts for our wedding, our invitation asked our guests that if they should feel inclined to gift us anything that have been in the form of a financial contribution for growing our family. I trust everyone's familiarity with farming to be sufficient enough to understand that neither Eric nor I will be getting pregnant anytime soon. So, we will need to look to the options of surrogacy or perhaps adoption to grow our family. In addition in addition to the hopes of growing our family through children, we will also be caring for Eric's 83-year-old father, who currently resides on a farm that has been part of Eric's family for multiple generations in Medford, Minnesota. Educators like us often don't make enough to cover the costs of family needs, thus asking for financial contributions rather than gifts at our wedding. The teacher shortage is real. This past summer, Eric received an unexpected phone call from a school board member of the Medford School District stating that Medford was in need of a music teacher and asking what Eric would need in order to consider taking the position. The potential to relocate, to be able to assist Eric's father, as well as be in closer proximity to my own parents for childcare, was highly appealing, to say the least. Despite the highly tempting and limited offer, the same values that inspired Eric to apply to fill 518's vacant board seat this past spring, and the values that spurred my encouragement for him to do so, allowed us to immediately respond with a thanks, but no thanks. Here is why we stayed. In Eric's 16 years as a part of this community and my five years, we have worked to build a life that means something to us. We are constantly inspired when we hear voices in positions of power in our district, like you, say things like, "Let's look at what's best for the students as we consider changing our calendar", rather than making a decision based on how we can best skirt having our paraprofessionals get unemployment. We are inspired that on the heels of the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, students in our district led a demonstration to make the statement that we and Worthington, Minnesota are greater than our differences, and senseless violence will not happen here. And that that demonstration was attended by teachers, school administrators, members of the clergy, city-elected officials, state representatives, and members of Worthington's law enforcement. Our colleagues in the district, teachers, parents, and all school staff show tremendous hard work and dedication every day. We couldn't pick a better team. We are inspired when our admin team makes a decision to promote love and inclusion of children in the LGBTQIA+ community. In some parts of this country, members members of the LGBTQIA+ community and teachers are villainized to support a political agenda. But here in Worthington, we are stopped by amazing community members in the grocery store wondering when we might be adding children to our family. The values of this district and community keep Eric and I here hours away from family. Those values align with ours and inspire us to raise children here. There's so much good in District 518. We believe in Worthington. It is my hope that as negotiations with our union continue, that the board will see the value of its educational staff, who every day work countless hours beyond our contract hours to ensure every child feels safe, welcomed, and important. I hope continued respectful work with our union and agreement to a contract that reflects that value will recruit and retain more professional educators for our district. We care. We teach. Students can't learn without supported educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake, for your comments. 1.32, recognition of student, staff, and community. I have received none. Have received no requests. 2.0, approve agendas.
I move approval of the consent and main agenda.
Motion by Adam.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Lori to approve the consent and main agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0, approval of minutes.
I move approval of the minutes for the July 18th meeting and July 6th and July 18th school board work sessions.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Matt to approve the minutes as listed. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.0, approve the items on the consent agenda.
I move approval of the items under the consent agenda.
Motion by Lori.
Seconded by Tom.
Seconded by Tom to approve the items on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0, main agenda. 5.1, monthly financial overview. Dave?
You have, well, you actually have a couple here. The first one is for the month of July, ending July 31st of this year. It's the first year in our fiscal year budget, and you can see we're pretty much, as we were last year, there's been no unusual or extraordinary revenues or expenditures at this point. And the second one is, it's an updated end-of-year revenue expenditure. Noted last month, we hadn't included any of the teacher summer salaries. Those are all included now. This gets you a little closer to where we'll be in the audit, but there are still quite a few adjustments to be made, so just kind of keeping you up-to-date a little closer. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Dave? Hearing none. Thank you, Dave. 5.2, approve second readings of policies. I will read all the policy numbers. Policies 102, 418, 419, 424, 425, 507, 509, 513, 514, 515, 516, .5, 532, 534, 602, 603, 604, 613, 616, 618, 620, 621, 624, 708, 709, and 806. Recommended action is to approve all these policies.
I make a motion we approve the policies as listed.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Erin to approve the policies just read. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.3, approve first reading of policies, 504, 506, and 601. This is the first reading of these policies.
I make a motion we approve the first reading of the policies, 504, 506, 524, and 601.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Adam. Any discussion? Erin?
Policy 524 focuses on internet usage and cellphone usage. And when I read this, I don't disagree with any of it, but it reads as if internet-based research in the classroom is a new phenomenon. I think it, we could, it would be wise to perhaps update some of that language to reflect some of the current trends of how technology is utilized in the classroom. I also think that this policy would also be a great place for a cellphone policy if the district were to adopt one, to provide guidance to teachers and make it very clear to students what is and is not allowed in the classroom. So, just my two cents on policy 524.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Any comments?
Which page or location, Erin, were you looking at, or the entire document?
The entire document seems pretty outdated. The first section's focused on internet-based research, and then it's followed by a section on cellphone usage, but doesn't actually explicitly state what is.
So, again, this is the monopolicy that comes from MSBA, and their attorneys put it together, so if we do, we can make adjustments if that's what we want to do, and if in the second reading, we want to talk about change, or at the next month's meeting, we want to talk about changes and those type of things, absolutely, we can look at that. I just need to know where you think we need to make changes, so, other than...
Okay, I can email you a redlined version with some suggestions.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
And we did discuss it at the Instructional Committee, and actually, the cellphone policy is in each of the handbooks for the different buildings. There's also a piece in there about how the students should be using their cellphones for each building. It's different. And then the teachers too have a little bit of leeway of how they want that cellphone to be used in their classrooms. So, we talked about not getting this too specific that way, just because we already have it in the handbooks, and teachers have their own policies as well, as well.
Okay, and that's, yeah, good that it was discussed. I think my train of thought was following the previous board meeting or work session where we discussed the idea of a cellphone policy, so.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
A motion and a second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.4, approve 2324 preschool calendar.
I move approval of the 2324 preschool calendar.
Second.
By Lori, seconded by Adam. Any discussion? This is slightly different than the regular school year calendar. Has been went through the Instructional Committee, didn't it? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.5, approve temporary, temporarily appoint an NCIC coordinator.
So, right now, NCIC does not have a coordinator. The Joint Powers Board had a recommendation of an individual for that, and that was the past coordinator of that, which was Sue. So, the recommendation would be to appoint Sue temporarily in that. So, part of her community ed enrichment job, she'd be doing both jobs, but they won't cross over, so that would be the recommendation to appoint Sue in that role.
Are we still advertising then?
Correct. They're hoping to have somebody hired in a couple months.
Mr. Chair, question? Was there any, as part of this motion, this is just moving ahead with the appointment, any additional salary or anything like that talked about as part of the process?
No, we'll have to work that out.
You'll work that out, okay. Because we had, the Joint Powers Board had also talked about a recommendation that there be some additional salary of some kind for taking on the extra duties, the extra time.
Right, there will be some additional compensation.
Okay. I would so move the appointment of Sue as the temporary NCIC coordinator.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.6, approve temporary and permanent drainage easement agreements.
This was presented to the Operations Committee. I don't have the finalized ones in front of me. What was missing was the maps and those pieces of the puzzle. Otherwise, the language will stay as you were presented, so it would be to move this forward and keep the project moving forward. And Operations Committee recommended approval.
I would so move approval of the easements for the drainage easements for the intermediate school site.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Erin. Any discussion?
Were we, for Dave, we talked about that driveway? But you said that's in the easement, correct? So, we don't have to, remember, Steve, you had brought it up?
Yeah, we talked about accessibility and having some way to get across the other side for maintenance and stuff, and I think it was...
I think it's covered under the easement.
It's covered good enough.
Okay.
Okay.
And I did, so you know, I did email Mr. Livdahl, and that's what their plan is, the south side, and then creating on the north side of crossing, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Motion is to approve temporary and permanent drainage easements agreements with the watershed district. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve proposed adjustment in vacation schedule.
So, the proposed adjustment in the current district 12-month employee vacation schedule was presented to the Instructional Committee, and it changes the years, so you qualify a little sooner for additional vacation, and it breaks it out throughout the years. Once you hit year 15, then it goes up a day every two years. Until '25, at that point, you're capped out. And there was a recommendation to approve.
I will move to approve the proposed adjustment in vacation schedule.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Erin, seconded by Lori to approve the proposed adjustment in vacation schedule for 12-month employees. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.8, approve district-wide employee handbook. This goes to Instructional or?
Operational.
This was at the Operational Committee meeting, and of course, you just approved the vacation schedule, which will be updated in there when it's sent out. It's pretty well updated. We've got everything taken care of. It's something, rather than doing individual building employee handbooks, we went to a district-wide handbook, so it covers pretty much everything, and all the adjustments are made. So, the recommendation was to approve that.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Adam to approve the district-wide employee handbook. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve nonprofit organizational mural contest.
So, I had two people, Chris Honacy and Christina Adame, come in and present an idea for, and they called it a graffiti. I call it a mural. Not really graffiti. For nonprofits to have a chance to create a mural on the West Building as a contest and bring or highlight their organization, there is dollars that they could win in this, and their goal is to only have it up for a short period of time, since the building is going to be demolished. They don't want it up for three months. It would be a short window of time. So, we have to figure out when our contractor is coming, so we can kind of set that up. And of course, you need approval. My biggest concern was to ensure that they had liability insurance coverage for this type of project, and to ensure that there really ended up being no graffiti on the building. And if there was in other places, they would take care of it. So, those were my two big concerns. Otherwise, it's an opportunity for them to highlight nonprofits and also give a chance for the community to be involved by voting on the best mural. So, I don't see any harm because the building's coming down, and the only thing, the other thing we need to check is to make sure the contractor isn't going to save any of the brick. I doubt he is, but we need to double-check that. And their plan is to do it, or would like to do it, on the north end and potentially on the northeast and northwest ends. So, but I told them they need board approval for this project to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, a question. Who is that entity that is leading it?
I'm not sure where Chris actually works. Christina works for the City of Worthington. And they actually borrowed the idea from Marshall. I guess they did this up there, and it was very successful and a lot of fun, so.
And that entity will have the cash for the prizes?
They told me they would have a cash prize for the first, I think, believe, three.
The voting will happen, will it be?
Once it's complete, then it'd be the community, they have the plan to have the community vote, and then they'd establish.
And will have easy access for walking or driving through that area safely, reviewing?
As far as I know, they can drive around the circle quite a few times there.
Okay.
And that's if weather allows them to do it, because we don't know when they're going to demolish. If they go into December, it's going to be too cold for them to try and spray paint, so it might not happen.
Now, though, right?
Well, we pushed it off too late in the year to save some money, and I think that was...
The actual contest could happen.
But they only want it up for a couple weeks, right?
Yeah, but I think their goal is about two to three weeks, no longer than that. So, they give them a week to do it, and then it'd be up for a couple weeks, and then hopefully demolition starts. So, that's why we got to check with the contractor on when he's tentatively coming and if he's going to save any of the brick.
Mr. Chair?
The median that they're using would be spray paint or painting or whatever.
Their choice, I guess.
Yeah, I think we also had talked a little bit about the, if we did do it earlier, and they're the ones who really don't want it up there longer than necessary. And I think there was some discussion about the possibility of painting over and covering them up if it was going to take longer than reasonable for the contractor to come in and do the demolition, or the weather would be too cold, do it in the fall, later in the fall, while the weather's still permissible. And then if we get done with the three weeks, the contractor's not there. One of the options, I think we talked about, was them being able to paint over it then and cover them up at that point. So, I would make a motion that we move ahead with the nonprofit mural contest with the understanding that we work within the parameters of timeline of reducing the timeframe when they would be visible, and that if the contractor wasn't coming in in time, they move ahead, that they would make arrangements to have them painted over.
And the purpose of painting over, having it for a short duration of time, is just so that they don't have to monitor the site for an extended period of time?
Yes, sometimes the belief, I think, is that if you have things painted on a wall, it might encourage other people to come and paint other things on the wall. So, by leaving it up for a short period of time and then covering it up would take away that visual appearance that it's okay to do that. Yeah, other people coming in and adding their own or doing other things to the building, graffiti or other things to the building, that wasn't sanctioned by us. So, that was the idea of monitoring it and then covering it up if not, if necessary, if they couldn't get the building down in time over a short period of time.
Second. Motion made and seconded. To approve the nonprofit organization mural contest to be held at the West Building. We will be contacting the contractor after we're all right with them, and... Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just would reiterate that we worked to follow what Mr. Schneider said about the willingness to cover up if that was their choice, so we can make this happen or not, but that whether it be a deterrent.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.10, discussion on facility fees. This goes where?
It was brought or discussed, it was put on the agenda for the work session, and then there was discussion at the operation, and the recommendation was to bring it here because, again, I visited with Mr. Woodblum, who put it on there, so it would be to get what he's thinking, so you guys can have a discussion about that.
Mr. Chairman, I, the intent of the discussion was to really think about what we're in business to be doing of providing public facilities that are paid for by public taxpayers and being able to use in our community. I'd like to think that our school district's goal is to be able to use these public facilities and not place burdens on them for entities to use, especially nonprofit groups, startup groups. We have a Taurus Football Club that we charged $5,000 to use our facility. And a startup, brand-new organization, that, how much of a bigger stumbling block can you put in front of a group than that kind of dollar amount? I understand there's the cost to operate these facilities. I understand there's custodial fees. I understand that these events happen on Saturdays and Sundays, where additional money is used to pay for these employees. But I would really encourage us to think about why we're charging the amounts of money that we are. These dollar amounts are a small drop in our financial bucket. We have the Worthington Wrestling Club that we charge $500 to use our facilities between custodial fees and the event fee. The MYFL, if they would like to play on Trojan Field for our young football players, or future Trojans, we hope, they have to pay $300. They hope to have $1,200 in their... They hope to have twelve hundred dollars in their budget or in their checking account. Okay, so that's twenty-five percent of their checking account, is to play one game at Trojan Field. Three hundred dollars is point zero 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 four three eight percent of our seventy million dollar budget. That's a drop in our bucket, but that's twenty-five percent of what they have in their checking account. So I would encourage us to think of ways to make these facilities usable for all of our groups that we have in our community. I've got kids that I want to be future Trojans, and I want them to be able to play on Trojan Field and be inspired to do that. And I think we're putting stumbling blocks on these fees. I would suggest that we, I would, first of all, like to know what the cost would be if we were to pay for the custodial cost ourselves, but also encourage us to be creative in offering these organizations, maybe they put down a deposit of a hundred dollars, and then the custodial staff not needed to be there on that Saturday. But they look at the facility when it's concluded. If they're satisfied with the way it was left, then there's no dollars changing hands. That's where I come from with the encouragement to look at what we're really gaining by money-grabbing in this situation.
So are you talking high school gym use, middle school field use, every facility that we offer?
Yeah, obviously, it needs to have discussion of, does it make sense for the for-profit Boatmakers of America group to use our gym at the same cost that it would at the Turkey Shootout? Probably not, but it should also be usable for a private entity, and, but I think there's some things that could be simplified, and simplify in our use plan, too. I mean, our facility use plan is comparable to an event center. What's a for-profit organization? I mean, ours is, it's, amount of administrative hours put into constructing that is a lot.
Any further discussion? So where does this go, to a session, then, a work session, or what? I mean, it'd have to be looked at by the whole board and look at all the fees.
What do you? Yeah, so, you know, realistically, there are fees and costs, and electricity and garbage and all those costs, and we can break those all out for you to review. Again, using Trojan Field, we made accommodations where they could do some of the supervision. We didn't put anybody on, but the custodians typically, when they're working, the event, doing cleanup, they're in overtime. Our rate for that is thirty-five dollars an hour. So when we looked at the overall costs and what's there, we can figure that all out based on that. And again, our experience, based on past rentals, is when organizations, we used to allow them to do the cleaning, but they never cleaned to the expectation that needed to happen. So again, we're willing to, we've been willing to work with organizations and not so-called overcharge, and the other piece we've always avoided is being in competition with those businesses, like the event center or other places that rent facilities. So there are certain things we just have never allowed in any of our facilities, such as birthday parties, or anniversaries, or wedding dances, or any of those things. So again, I would say if you're looking to have a broader conversation about this, it potentially needs to happen at a work session and then off to the Operations Committee before it comes back here.
Mr. Chairman, encourage us to think outside the box on this, too. If we know that we have an event on Saturday, is it possible for the custodian to cut loose at an earlier time on Friday, and then do clean the upper wing when they're in the building on Saturday, and also be monitoring the gym? I mean, just the idea of maybe doing things a little outside the box on it. I know the MYFL would like to host their championship Saturday here at Trojan Field. It's at Spirit Lake and has been for past years, and there's no charge to the MYFL to use that facility. And there's a potential revenue through concessions that could go to a booster club organization. A lot of these events bring a lot of folks to town, too, and if we're able to allow groups to host weekend tournaments, that helps the community, that helps the whole concept of what we're supposed to be as a community member, is raising the boat. So I think that, I would appreciate us being able to discuss this farther, and in whatever venue that needs to be.
Okay, I think we'd have to go to a work session. The next one we have, make sure we put it on the agenda. They can provide numbers for us, and we can review the current charges, and let the full board decide where we should go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion on this, this is a discussion item, so. Thank you, Matt, for your input. Five point eleven, approve salary and benefits increase for community education director for twenty-three, twenty-five.
Make motion to approve the benefits to, for the community ed director and the salary.
Second.
Motion by Lori, seconded by Matt, to approve the community education director's salary and benefits for the twenty-three, twenty-five school years. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point one two, discuss approve use of lease levy for Southwest SWWC Service Cooperative Facilities.
So the legislature passed a sixty-five dollar per pupil levy utilizing the lease levy in this last session. Previously, they, the service co-op put it on as a different form, or could put it on our levy in a different form. Now it's separate, so it really doesn't affect our overall lease levy. It's in addition to what we have authority for. In the past, excuse me, the, you have elected not to utilize the lease levy for that dollar figure, and typically, this would go through the Operations Committee, but it's now time-sensitive. They just notified me last week after the Operations Committee. So the lease levy, if you utilize lease levy, the amount would be forty-six thousand six hundred and eight dollars. Otherwise, those dollars would come out of the general fund, which is what you've done in the past. At least for the last two years, if not three.
I think we got a strong enough general fund. Couldn't we continue that route?
At this point, you could, yes. It's not a huge dollar figure.
Mr. Chairman, also, this is something I think that we approve each year.
Yes.
So if we make the decision that, as Adam said, that's strong, if we see changes in our fund balance, I think we could always put it in place next year, so it's a yearly decision we can make.
I just hope they're a little more timely next time.
Yeah.
Will that sixty-five dollars per pupil unit change, or is that now set by the legislator? Will they read?
That amount is now set by the legislature.
For the biennium for two years?
Yeah, correct.
Is our rate that we're being charged, that's, the sixty-five dollars, is that cover all our costs? Or do we need to levy the full sixty-five dollars per pupil to raise the money?
This is the dollar amount they would put on our levy, so, yes.
Okay. But is, does that come out to the sixty-five dollars per pupil?
I didn't do the math.
They set a dollar amount, we can go up to sixty-five. They set a dollar amount, we levy the dollar amount, not necessarily the full amount.
I'm assuming they're levying the full amount based on the fact that they have lots of facility needs.
I'm well aware of that, being on the board.
Yeah.
What was our dollar amount again?
Forty-six thousand six hundred and eight dollars.
So we would need approval for that out of the...
Any action then, if we're not going to take it as a levy, right?
I would...
I think you'd want to make a motion.
I would want a motion that you're going to use general fund versus lease levy to pay this.
I would make a motion that we take the forty-six thousand, forty-six thousand six hundred and eight dollars out of general fund to fund the service co-op for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Tom, to take the dollars out of the general fund and not a special lease levy. Any discussion? Can review this every year, and if we decide to go to a lease levy, we always can, but... Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is that the end of the regular business? Okay, we'll go on to reports. Superintendent report, John.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. First, board filing ended today at five o'clock, so I'm not sure who filed. I didn't double-check before I left, so Lisa just shared with me, it was, the only applicant was Mr. Woodblum, so he will go on the ballot as in for November election, so. Secondly, we had new teachers in this week. Yesterday was their first day. Not all of them were there, but that's due to conflicts after some late hiring and stuff. But we have approximately forty-five new staff members, and next week, don't forget, on Monday, we have all staff in for the morning open session, so hopefully, it might fit in everybody's schedule.
Just, what was the new staff number?
Forty-five is, I think, what I heard. And we still have roughly fourteen positions open. And all pairs were the other positions that were open, and I think we still have six open. And the last thing I was just gonna highlight real quick, we did have a negotiation session. We still have a number of the language items that I mentioned last time that are still up there, and there will be a closed session coming up at the end of the meeting related to that financially. Just wanted to highlight, if I can find my sheet here, the district offer is, financial offer is nine point oh six, and EMW current position is sixteen point six one percent. So that's the difference at this point, and like I said, we are making headway on the language items. Some will come in conjunction when we get closer due to financial items, but that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Any questions for John? Okay, Instructional Committee report.
Just a couple of things. We talked about the pros and cons of holding graduation on Trojan Field. Just more discussion on that from the work session, and we'll get those discussion points to Mr. Hastings. We also talked about the legacy wall that's moving forward. September fifteenth is the ribbon cutting for the legacy wall. I'm sure Ms. Foley will have some information coming out on the open, the ribbon cutting and getting people there. I think it's after a soccer game, is that correct? So other than that, everything else has been covered.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Operations Committee?
I have nothing more to add for the Operations Committee.
Okay. Other reports. We should mention that Green, New Administration Office remodel job is gonna have an open house this seventh of September.
Correct.
Sorry, I missed that one.
Yeah, it's the seventh, and I...
Three to six.
Three to six on September seventh for the community to, anyone wants to come see, that's a big project, and it's a very nice facility, a lot of room, and offices, and was really needed, and it was done, it's in under use now, so it's open to the public the third, on the seventh of September, three to six. Anything else? Going to other business, we are going to a closed session to discuss strategy for teacher's contract, superintendent contract, and potential property purchase. We are going to closed session.
Need a motion.
We need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session at this point.
Second.
Motion by Lori, seconded by Matt. Going to closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are out of closed session. Open up the meeting. The three items were discussed in the closed session. First was a teacher's contract, negotiations for a two-year contract. Both items dealing with contract language, benefits, and compensation were reviewed. Second item was the superintendent's contract discussion, cover salary and benefits. Third was the option to buy a parcel of property for future school district use, located in the south half of the northeast quarter, section twenty-one, point two, range four. Those are the three items discussed in closed session. So we are out of closed session now. We need a meeting to adjourn.
So, motion by Tom. Second.
Second. Motion made, seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.